For the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, three point O is the approval of our agenda.
I'll make a moment to approve it. Second that.
New discussion? Um, just a point of order on our agenda for tonight. We have a truth and taxation meeting at six P M. Uh, so the chair may jump ahead in the agenda if we're ahead of six o'clock or running early. Uh, he may jump down to um, item eight point five, uh, if uh, we have extra time in there before six o'clock. So just so people know, we adjust the agenda. That's why.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye, aye, those opposed? Motion carries four point O, our acknowledgements and recognitions. Um, we've got a couple of those tonight, which is always fun. Um, so first of all, well, we are bidding adieu to of our board members tonight. Um, so first of all, Lexi Serva, our student school board rep, this is her final meeting. She's been with us for the entire calendar year of twenty twenty four. She came on the board in January. Um, and Lexi, I gotta tell you, you've just been like so consistent, always here providing great input. Um, it's just been really nice to have you on the board. Thank you for all the extra work that you've done. You know, in your busy days to be here. So congratulations.
Thank you. Maybe Lexi wants to share with us some next steps because it's not a normal track, right? Like you're you're taking a fun little hiatus here.
Yeah, I um, graduate at the end of the semester, so I'll be done January seventeenth. And then my plan is to do a gap year program through Pacific Discovery, which is like about culture and conservation. And so we start in Hawaii and then go to Fiji and then go to museums. And so I'll be doing that from February sixth to um, April sixteen. So I'll be back in time for prom and to graduate, of course, but yeah, that's my plan.
Wow.
Fun. They have a middle aged tracker?
And then do you have a plan?
Old lady track.
After after graduation and all that officially, do you have a plan for next step after that?
Yeah. Um, I'm planning to go to University Montana in Missoula, so I just went on a visit like last month.
Did you have a beautiful? Yeah, some kind of flying medicine.
For you it?
Yep.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm I'm a Grizz and so is Claire.
Yeah, and I I toured there and I like toured like a bunch of other schools all over the west, and that was the first one I went to. And I was like, I don't even know that I need to see the rest of them like. I just loved it.
Oh, that's oh, that's.
And I'm going, I'm planning on majoring in biology. And right now I'm thinking the pre-med track, but we'll see. So.
Well, that's amazing. You're gonna love being in Missoula. That's a great choice.
I love it.
Cool.
Yeah.
So we got you a little something from the board as a a little something to remember this experience by.
Hi.
You can take it with you. Put that up in your dorm room.
Yes, thank you. I love this park actually.
Every graduate has to have that book.
Yeah, of course.
That's right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
It's so fun to be here.
Thanks for doing such a great job.
Thank you. I really love doing it. I'm gonna miss it. Do you guys know of anyone who has applied or is applying yet?
Not yet. We gotta put the screws to some juniors.
I'm I'm trying. Don't worry. I only have heard of two people who were like maybe interested in. I encouraged them to try and do it, um, but junior is really hard, which of course I know. So. Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get get somebody here in the next few weeks.
Yep.
So. And also, who has been with us for the last four years? Can't believe it's already been four years.
Yeah, it's weird.
Um, Stephanie Radloff. Um, Stephanie, thank you so much for being a part of the board. It's been great to have you.
Thank you.
Seriously. So best of luck on your future endeavors.
Nothing that exciting.
Fiji or Fuji or Hawaii or.
Advisor, let me know.
But um, we got you a little something from the board as well.
Thank you, guys.
Momento of your service. So I hope you stay engaged with what we're doing here and.
Sure, I will.
Yeah. Good.
Quite a few more years, actually, so.
Yeah, yeah, little ones.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Absolutely. For any board member that serves. It's awesome.
Totally. Okay, five point O, our recognition of visitors and community comments. So um, welcome to our visitors. And you know, we're saying goodbye, hello, and welcome to you. Um, thanks for being with us here in the room tonight and welcome any visitors who are joining us live on Zoom or future Zoom recordings. Um, and we don't have any public comments tonight, but the community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the school, the school board on an item included in the agenda in accordance with the guidelines printed at the end of the agenda for future reference. All right, six point O are our reports. Uh, six point one is the principal's report. And Mr. Balaji, hello.
Hello, good evening, everybody. So for my report tonight, um, I start every report off just talking about Satu Mountain Elementary and our junior vitamins values, and we continue to recognize our uh, students who are representing the values of being respectful, being responsible, and being their best. Uh, this month, we are focusing on the theme of generosity. So each uh, day, we challenge the kids to uh, act of generosity. Um, to the people around them. And today's challenge, for example, was was to smile at everybody you walk by with a nice, big, genuine smile. Just be generous with your smile. Um, and also, we are looking at rewarding our Satsu elementary students on Friday next week before break with a community uh, movie event in the A C A. If we can have uh, more positive expect or uh, behavior and response to expectations specifically on the playground. The last this year and last year, we've been tracking uh, behavior expectations and that type of stuff through our P B I S program. So we can look at uh, the data from November and December last year and see, oh, how many times do we have to correct behavior on the playground versus this year? And we're challenging the kids if we can have a better kind of a report, um, specifically on the playground. Uh, we're going to celebrate and recognize that with a movie on Friday in the afternoon, and we're keeping it a surprise. And we're going to check to see if they reach that goal on Wednesday next week. Uh, so that's kind of a a fun event that we're we're doing with our elementary kiddos. Um, in the middle and high school, our winter activities are in full swing. The the snow has been great. We actually have ski races happening already, which I don't think happened at all until like January, February last year. It's been really fun to see our girls varsity basketball team and boys varsity basketball team and their double header on the event. So if people haven't been able to come out and watch, we had a great night on Tuesday. Uh, the girls game was super exciting. Um, they didn't pull it out, but it was just a ton of fun. Um, and so we've got another double header tomorrow night. And then our middle school students next week on Friday are gonna have one of their exploratory days where they'll be going out in the community Friday afternoon. Um, curling, uh, playing basketball, truffle making, uh, winter survival. They're all collecting into different events that they can do on Friday afternoon next week. Yes, um, before break. And then um, just for the community, we had midterms last week, so grades were finalized by teachers today. Um, so they can look for those updates in if any campus and then just a heads up, obviously, people know this is coming, but students' last day of school before break is Friday next week. And returning on Thursday, January second after winter break. So that's what I got.
You got to announce the basketball game.
Yes, I did. Live on the radio.
Yeah, on the radio.
I was listening to that game and I was like, is that Josh?
It was, it is. It will be tomorrow night as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Nice.
Yeah.
You've got a great, what do they say? You got a great face for radio?
My mom always told me I had a great face for radio.
That's not what they said. Is that what you're supposed to say?
Great voice for radio. You're a natural.
Anything else? Roast Josh here.
That's all right. All right. Well, good luck rounding out before break.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they're doing. We're we're doing well. Yeah, good years.
Thank you. But thanks. Okay, six point two is the superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Um, I just want anyone watching in the public to acknowledge that we've made a couple of weather announcements already regarding a two hour late start and a day closed. Uh, we live in Cook County. That's part of the routine. Um, something people may not know is the need for us to have a two hour delay might be more frequent than other districts because we don't have enough bus drivers. And the people that back up our bus drivers are the people that plow. So um, our two hour delay that we had recently, uh, it was literally to try to get parking lots open and ready to go as we tried to get buses out the door. Um, and it's a scramble in the morning when we're so short. So get your C D L and your bus license so you can sub uh, when we're short and uh, we can probably start on time a few more times during the year.
So can I just, as a, so if I hear you correctly, you're saying that maybe other institutions shouldn't use Cook County schools necessarily as a gauge of how bad the weather is. It's more about these labor conditions?
On occasion, the closure was was purely.
I mean, yeah, that was the weather.
Absolutely. And then.
There's snow and ice.
And snow and ice.
I will file that information and.
Yeah.
Take that back.
But yeah, just note that, you know, when if if we're getting a storm and we feel like we can go, we gotta get some things open ahead of time. We may have to delay for an hour or two to try to get um, some things uh, done because the plow guy's gotta get in a bus and run one of our routes.
So if uh, say an institution in a small town had bus drivers, probably less need for a two hour delay.
Correct.
So good to know.
Felt like I was in court there for a minute.
Nothing about you. County schools.
And could I just maybe make other one other little quick comment on that topic? Just for the benefit of everybody, the a couple of years ago, we, the board made the decision to extend the school year by a few days with kind of the express intention of being able to have a snow day on occasion and not have to do like a D learning day or something along those lines, or a makeup day or miss out on a P D day or something. So um, so we were able to do that and and that's not gonna cost us down the road, I'm assuming, in terms of like having to make it up, right?
Correct.
Fail to have that snow.
How many do we have?
We have four days built in, so we've used one uh, in the current school year. So you're absolutely right. Uh, the board made that decision a cou- couple of years ago uh, to make that change.
What is our policy? Say if we do, you know, instead of calling school, do a two hour delay until we know for sure?
Yep, we did one of those last year.
Cause I just.
Where we delayed and then I ultimately made the decision at about six A M. That we had to close. We weren't gonna make it. Um, so.
This one, like this last storm says, like, oh, we're gonna get fourteen inches. Well, we got five or six. So I was like, in my mind, I was like, man, we have school.
Yeah, well, there are parts of the district that have a foot. So it was a part of that is the hard part of Cook County is calculating all of that, right?
Right, right.
Um, so.
The other thought is the closing of it. How come we do it so early? And not?
Yep, um, courtesy, uh, helping people with daycare and and questions like that. I felt like our last closing was kind of a no brainer. Um, but there was one last year where we two hour delayed and then didn't make that decision until six o'clock the next morning because it felt like we might be able to go. We always wanna go if we can.
Yeah.
Um, because we're we feed kids and, you know, we educate them. So we we wanna go if we can. We also don't wanna put kids in a dangerous situation traveling on our buses. And, you know, as Josh knows, our buses are two wheel drive and they go up really icy, steep hills. And um, those dicey situations can be just that dicey, and we wanna make sure we're being safe. So it's a real, it's a real art and balance. I appreciate the county's help in making those decisions. We do use the highway department quite a bit. Um, help us with those decisions because they're spread out all over the county. But we're short bus drivers, so we need more bus drivers uh, so we can uh, fill all those seats. Uh, just for the board to know, on Tuesday of next week, we will be holding a bond rating call with Moody's. Uh, Michael Hart is here. You'll hear from him in just a little bit, but that call is related to the referendum and bond rating we uh, get uh, as we go out to sell bonds. So I expect favorable results on that uh, due to the board's really good prudent work to keep ourselves in a good fiscal situation. And uh, we'll be doing that on Tuesday. Uh, and then last but not least, um, hopefully you've paid attention to the fact that the legislature published the the November budget forecast uh, for this coming legislative session. That sets the the kind of the green light for the governor to put together uh, his proposed budget and then the House and the Senate to put together their proposed uh, caps or or budget uh, limits. Uh, and then in February, there'll be the next forecast, and that's when the sausage grinder really starts and they start saying, this is out, this is out, this is when the negotiating all starts. So game on, the starter's gun has gone off and uh, the legislative cycle starts in just a few weeks. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any any other questions?
Okay, I just have one more piggybacked one more time. Do you, do you um, I guess, check with the other schools in Cook County too, when it comes to calling? So everybody's on the same page?
No, we don't. We G S N S, we just are because we're the same.
Yeah.
And then Oshki has their own bus and uh, Birch Grove, I think they don't even bus. They tell the parents driving.
They use airhead transit.
Do they? Okay. So no, we don't really consult on that. Our consultation is with the county and what's the plow situation, what are their schedule, um, pretty much correct. And that's unique. Every other district I've worked in, I've collaborated with my neighbors. But our neighbors are so far away. It doesn't matter. So Jay and I communicated a couple of times a couple of years ago. But for the most part, not so much.
All right, uh, six point three is our student board report. And we've got Lexi Serva here with us. Hello?
Last one.
Last one.
Um, so like Balaji was saying, students have been busy with midterms and winter sports and clubs and many people who I've talked to are looking forward to the holidays and a break and enjoying the snow. Boys and girls basketball has officially started and they played, both of them played their first four games of the season. They had a home game on the tenth against Carlton Renshaw and the boys came out with a win by twenty. Um, the girls sadly lost by three, but we're still excited to see how both of their seasons play out. The Alpine Ski Team has its first race tomorrow in Giants Ridge and they're very excited about actually having snow this year and none of those races being postponed. Nordic Ski Team had um, their camp over the weekend at Bear Skin Lodge. And so they had like a great time bonding, having our cocoa, sitting by the fire, just getting ready for the season ahead. They also had their first race yesterday and had some great times to start the season. Their junior high team is looking pretty promising. And they're also very excited about having snow. Last week, Unified Club's Cool Cats Bowling Team traveled to Duluth to bowl and play arc arcade games. Um, they'd been looking um, forward to that for a while, so they're really happy to get out there. And then I just wanted to finish off my last report by saying thank you guys so much. Been really fun to speak and to see how all this works. So thank you.
It's Lexi.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I hope this is the beginning to a long career of public service for you. I'm sure it will be. You do a lot of stuff. Thanks again.
Okay, well, I'll go back to work.
All right. Thanks, Lexi.
Thanks, Lexi.
Chowder and stuff. Thank you, guys. Bye bye.
See ya.
Yep.
Okay, seven point O is our consent agenda. Um, is anything that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Um, let me know, otherwise we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. All right, how are we doing on time here?
Five twenty.
Five twenty.
Great.
Okay, eight point O are discussion and action items. Eight point one is to accept the November twenty twenty four expenditure revenue report. Got that in our packet and we've got uh, Ms. Teresa Olberg in the house.
And I would just say that in the interest of time, I have no comment unless anyone asks questions on this particular report. I've got more to talk about later.
Okay. Any questions from anyone?
No.
Okay. Then we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, those opposed, motion carries. Okay, eight point two is to approve the res- resolution authorizing the sale of school building bonds. Um, and we have P M A in the house tonight with a presentation here.
Yeah, I will uh, uh, project the presentation and uh, Michael Hart is here. Michael, welcome uh, for our board members. Probably seen Michael in the past on the little Zoom screen at different times. Um, so thank you, Michael, for making the big drive up to Grand Marais and uh, being willing to be here. This is a big deal, so we're thankful that you're um, able to take time to be here. Michael uh, is the person that Teresa and I have called for all things management of cash flow, management of investments, in this case, uh, helping us with the bond referendum process, all of the runs that you saw about how much things would cost taxpayers and stuff that all came from Michael and his team at P M A through the course of this process. So um, as I said, on the seventeenth, we have a call with Moody's for our bond rating call. Uh, but then we need to step through a process to sell the actual bonds and in the financing process. Michael's here as our expert to walk us through all things about the how that works. So thank you, Michael.
Very good. Happy to be here. Excited for you and your success with the election here in November. Um, question one, and my goal here tonight is to to kind of show you path forward in terms of the steps that we'll be taking. Some of them you'll be involved in and some of them will be behind the scenes with administration. And then ultimately, the action that we'll be asking of you tonight is to authorize us proceeding forward with executing the financing and and proceeding forward the sale of the bonds. So um, on the second slide, it's kind of just what we talked about, review timeline, bond structure and the board action. So the next one is on timeline that we have outline. And so you pass a referendum on November first or fifth, you you went through the canvassing. Tonight, we're asking you to provide a resolution to to authorize proceeding forward. We have a rating call next week. Um, we'll be working hard and already in process of of preparing bond documents. So there's some some legal documents and other documents that go out to the bond market to represent the school district and ultimately solicit bids from buyers of purchasers of the bonds. This calendar, as you have it in front of you, um, our goal is to be done with that process by the end of the first week of January of the preparation to submit that out to the market and actually receive the bids back uh, during the week of January thirteenth. We have that set for January fourteenth on this calendar. Uh, but that's a day we'll be monitoring and and can move as as that gets closer. That is the date that the interest rates are actually locked. So the numbers I'm gonna show you here in a moment are are still preliminary. They're favorable compared to to what you saw this summer and through the referendum process, but they are preliminary. We'll come back to the board for a ratifying resolution. So your kind of final stamp of approval at your January twenty third board meeting. And the funds would be received by the school district on February eleventh is what this plan would would contemplate. So the next slide shows a a comparison of, I provided a a detailed set of information for you that was part of the review and comment document that you submitted this summer. And it also guided us in terms of the tax numbers that I uh, we shared with you and the tax calculator that we prepared for you online. So this is a comparison between what was there and and what we're preliminary estimating today. We do expect the interest rate will be a little bit lower um, than what was then. So you can see the total amount of the bonds you have authorized is twenty four million, one hundred seventy five thousand dollars. One of the things that will be learned on the date of the sales will be called bond premium. This has to do with the way that the bonds are bid uh, from the the bidder of those bonds. It is additional funds that are provided in addition to the twenty four uh, point one seven five million. Part of that is how we we recognize the lower interest cost. The total principal and interest on this is about estimate is about five hundred thousand dollars less over the twenty year timeframe. The cost of issuance we're estimating to be slightly less. And then you can see your deposit to the construction fund. This these are the funds that you have net of the financing cost to put into your construction work. Um, we had twenty four million, one seventy five in the original plan. We do expect it to be able to generate some additional funds, although how much that is will be dependent upon the bid that is received through that bond premium number. Um, so and we're still being a little bit conservative on these preliminary estimates at this time uh, based upon these preliminary numbers. So I'm just gonna pause and give questions about that and uh, and our expectations here.
Um, the additional deposit to construction is just from that premium?
Correct.
And there could be potentially or through the investment of the bond funds, is that?
That is correct, yeah.
So that that number could go up, and maybe you call it something else, but the actual amount available could go up a little bit more too in the future?
Yeah, so it could go up, but it could it could change in two ways. One, the bond premium could be more or less than what's shown here. But this would be, so like the twenty four million, four hundred eighty three, that would be the that would be the actual amount of money that is wired to the district on February eleventh and is received in your account. And then through the construction timeline, which it looks like you're gonna hear more about the next steps on that in your meeting here tonight. Those funds will be invested and you will be earning interest on those. Um, and that'll be a significant dollar amount that you'll be able to earn too. Part of the process that we go through, I have a slide at the end on this, but I think it makes sense to just talk about it now, is we'll work with your partners at I C S to try to have as clear understanding as we can of how you expect to spend the money through the con- to through the project. So some of it you'll spend quickly, some of it will be spent. You know, I expect two years from now. And um, we'll help you make investments to maximize that interest earnings through the period of time so that there there is always cash available to to pay for that. And we help you monitor through that process between when the the funds are received in February. In those first few weeks, we'll be going through a process of helping you invest those dollars collectively with your administration. We'll be able to provide your administration a pretty good estimate on interest earnings within a month to six weeks of of when you receive the funds so that as you're doing the planning process this winter and spring, you have good information about that. So you can, you can allocate funds as you see fit.
And one other quick question, just in terms of the timeline and locking in the rate. Um, the the interest rates are coming down, like you mentioned. Is there, are you guys kind of strategizing that a little bit in terms of like forecasting the rates out here and in terms of the timing on 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 some of this, or is that it just happens to be based on?
Yeah, I mean, most of what this is, interest rates have not changed a lot this year, but when we provide you your preliminary estimates, we're pretty conservative in there because we we want to make sure we can do what we told your community that we can do. Um, and so most of that difference is related to that, frankly. In terms of timeframe of when we sell the bonds, um, we we are not, we can't tell you what the market is gonna do and we're not gonna pretend to tell you that. What I can tell you is that oftentimes, the month of January is a very good time to sell bonds for Minnesota school districts. Because there's market, you know, there's economic market forces, but one thing that's true every single year is school districts, cities, counties in Minnesota pay their bondholders back on February first. And so what that amounts to is that taxpayers, there's there are literally billions of dollars going from school districts, counties and cities all across the state into the hands of investors. And those investors want to give that money back to school districts, counties and cities by reinvesting in the month of February. And so we're trying to take advantage of that sort of supply and demand dynamic by having a sale in January that closes in February because the money goes to investors on February first. And uh, so to to the extent oftentimes this middle of January is one of the best times here to sell bonds.
Okay. Great. All right.
So the next slide just gives you, you you've seen a chart like this if you had looked at the prior documents, but shows you your current bonds um, in in the blue and the green colors there. And then how these new bonds will uh, look compared to that with the the red payment in here. One thing you'll notice is it's a it's a twenty year bond payment structure. So your payments combined together with your current debt will be steady for the next twenty years. The payments on the new bonds get larger after your some of your old bond issues pay off after uh, in twenty thirty seven, those old bonds pay off. And so your the new ones are will get larger designed to wrap around that. Pay off. The next slide is a reminder of the tax impact. So we had tax impacts for question one, two and three. This is the tax impact for question one that was presented and our expectation currently is that it will be imagine that tax impact are slightly lower than that based upon the current interest rates. There's a couple of other key features that I think it's important for the board to understand about the bond issue. First, uh, one of the key features is called a call date, it's a or a redemption provision. And this is And this is, uh, one thing is a little bit different with the school district bond than like a home mortgage. Is that once you sell the bonds, you are locked into those interest rates for a period of time. Usually that period of time is seven to ten years from the date that you issued the bonds. We're recommending that that call feature be February first of twenty thirty-three, which means those interest rates are fixed until that time. At that time, you could refinance um, the bonds if interest rates were lower or prepay them if you had other funds. It's, it's fairly unusual for school districts uh, to do, but you're locked into it uh, that way. Another important thing and a part of your resolution tonight is that the bonds will be uh, rated with, by Moody's and will also be applying for the state credit enhancement program. It's a program where the state of Minnesota tells the bondholders, we will pay the bondholder, bondholders off if for any reason the school district can't. It's never been used by a school district in Minnesota, but it's really important because uh, now bondholders have the taxing power of the entire state. And so they'll offer you a lower interest rate for that. So we're, we're going to help you be a part of that process. And the, the last point is kind of in the weeds of IRS regulation, but there are rules um, about what we call arbitrage rebate. And this has to do with, there are limitations in terms of how much interest you can earn on the, the funds as you hold them. And we're going to help you monitor that through the process. It's possible that at the end of the project, you have to file a tax return and write a check to the IRS. If you do that, if we're in that position though, it means that we have maximized every dollar that we can in terms of interest return. So I wouldn't look at that as a bad thing. That's a problem for three, four, five years from now, but it's something that we're going to be monitoring for you on a monthly basis throughout the project.
One other quick question there on that call date. Um, is, so we can potentially refinance, we're locked in till that point, but what if the interest rates have gone up or something? Are we exposed to those or do we continue with the same one?
That's completely at the school district's option. The, the rates will be fixed unless you wanted to go out to the market to reduce that.
Okay.
So this next slide is showing you a, a summary of the resolution, the action that you have here in the packet for the board's consideration. It's approving proceeding with the bond sale subject to certain parameters, approving submission to the state credit enhancement program. It's also improving the reimbursement for any project expenses. So if you have any expenses between now and February that you need to pay, you're allowed to pay yourself back for those things. The parameters of the bond sale, this is providing authority to the superintendent and an officer of the board. So two, two people to sell the bonds to, to to execute the bond sale as long as the interest rate does not exceed five and a half percent and the amount does not exceed twenty-four million, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. This provision allows us to pick the day to sell the bonds. And, and so we spent a little bit of time thinking about things like what economic news is going to be known or, you know, uh, is there something else happening in the world that we want to avoid a particular day? And so those two individuals, the board is providing authority to actually sell, execute the contract to sell the bonds. And then the board ratifies at your next meeting, which is expected to be your January regular meeting. In the last slide, I, I reviewed this through our, you know, uh, our process will help you match expenditures. Do the investments, monitor those investments, provide you regular updates on the expected interest rates and comply with IRS regulations. The reason you have IRS regulations to comply with is that the interest rates are tax exempt interest rates. So when the bondholder receives your interest payment, they do not pay tax when they receive that, which means they will offer you a lower interest rate. It's a benefit to you as a school district by give, providing a benefit to the, the investor.
Just as a point of curiosity, who are the investors that are typically, like, that are typically buying these types of bonds?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, what did you say?
They said outfitters? It's just business.
Yeah, um, you know, it, it's, they're owned by individuals, insurance companies, mutual funds. Um, usually that tax exemption I just described means that school district bonds are more valuable for people who pay a higher tax rate. So it's mostly owned by wealthy individuals who pay a high tax rate because they're, they're shielding from taxes or corporations um, that are, you know, have the same, same goal. They're also seen as very secure investments because the tax base is very stable here. Plus we have that state credit enhancement program on it. So you're able to borrow at a much lower interest rate than your average business would be in the current market environment.
True. Like an economics lesson right here. All right, cool. There's your smiley face.
Great. And then do, are, do we need to take action now or would we, do we look at this other piece first?
Uh, in your packet is more the, the narrative behind this, the pre-sale finance plan that was included in the email that you gave us, Michael.
Yep.
We don't need to walk through that. That's kind of the, that's some bolts.
Yeah, it's more, it, that's more for the curi, it's a deeper layer of the same. I provided you the key details here in the presentation.
Yep.
Okay. So when those funds come in and before we do any construction draws, what do you think? Kind of interest could we pull from those if we're not doing work till June?
Um, I hesitate to be, to be too specific. It, it could be a six. It will certainly be a six-figure number and it could be, it could be a seven-figure number depending upon how long the project takes. I mean, you're, you're, in today's world, you would be earning more than four percent interest rate on twenty million dollars. You know, if you hold those funds for more than, you know, four percent times twenty million is eight hundred thousand dollars if you hold it for a year. So that's why, how I'm kind of giving you that. Now, interest rates have been going down uh, over the last few months, especially on investment rates. And actually, we expect the Federal Reserve to take action to make those rates go down again next week. The market does expect that, so it's certainly not guaranteed funds. And that's why we kind of work through a process after the closing to, to select investments to actually fix some of those interest rates, which will shield you from interest rates going down further. So we'd be buying things like bank CDs and, and US Treasury, very, very safe investments. But to lock in at interest levels so that you have good information about the project. It'll be a significant number.
Unlike that charter school person that went out and hedge fund three million dollars.
Yes. We, we don't do.
Yeah, nobody here wants to.
We don't do that.
And, and then as far as like PMA's fee structure, how does that work? Is that, is that, is this paid for, like, your guys' fees in that twenty-four million number or is that through some other mechanism that has?
Yeah, it's a part of that hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of cost of issuance that I showed you. It's, it is actually detailed out in the, that other document that's in there. Um, our fee, it's based, it's a calculation based upon the size of the borrowing. This estimates it at sixty-one thousand dollars. The other parts of it are the rating agency charge of fee. And you have bond attorneys hired through this process that provide legal opinions and um, and then there's some others, much smaller miscellaneous costs that are built into that.
Okay. And those are pretty much fixed at this point. Those aren't going to necessarily change based on how much interest we earn or something like that. You guys don't have like an advisory fee or something. You're just giving off that.
No, and so what I just quoted you is our fee to help you sell the bonds.
Uh huh.
In terms of the, the investments, there are um, to add a full transparency, if the, when we sell you a, a bank CD or a US Treasury, we do have a fee um, that's at, at the offset. The way that that typically works is that if we were to sell you a US Treasury and we were able to, the US Treasury was selling in the market at four point one five percent, for example, you, we would buy it at four point one five percent and sell it to you at four percent. The difference between that is how we, uh, how we make money on the investments. Now, the funds are held in the mintrust fund, which is a fund that is administered and uh, we don't own the fund, the school districts. There's over two hundred ten schools through the state that own and there's a board similar to you that um, ultimately manages that fund and they have hired PMA to help you, to help administer and market and that fund. And so uh, I, this is a long way of saying, the funds that are liquid in the money market fund, like many of your operating funds are now currently, we make money on that too because we're hired to administer that fund. And so there's no, uh, in terms of selling you investments, we make similar amount of money either way. So it's really about, which puts us in a position where we're doing, trying to do the best thing for you in terms of what is the best way to hold the money? How much should be liquid versus fixed? So that you can, you can maximize the interest earnings and protect yourself from lowering rates as well.
Sure. Cool. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? No, I think we just need a, a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution. The sale of school building. Authorized.
Stakes are high, I don't know.
Any, any further discussion? Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution is adopted? All right.
Michael, thank you again for making the drive up here. We appreciate you and love our partnership. So thank you.
Very happy to be here.
Yep, thank you so much. All right. Okay, so eight point three is our truth in taxation slotted time spot, but we've got a a share of fifteen, yeah, seventeen minutes. So maybe we should move on in, in interest of time. We've got enough time to start on eight point five, which is our discussion with ICS on next steps.
Yeah.
And then we'll see how this goes and we might have to pick this up into two parts. Does that sound okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so we are going ahead to eight point five right now. All right, let me see.
Yeah, so the eight point five is just talking about next steps and we, we ju, you just authorized the sale of the, the money, right? The sale of the bonds. We know that in February, the money flows in the door. Uh, so begins uh, the the process for implementing, implementing the project approved by the voters, which was all question number one, twenty-four point one seven five million dollars. So um, Lori is here from ICS to walk us through like, okay, what do we do next? Like, how do we, how do we pull together again the project oversight committee? What does stakeholder group involvement look like? What does that whole design phase look like? Kind of one of the next things over the next six months that we should be looking at. And then what's the board's role or how do we? What does the board do uh, as it pertains to all of that? So thanks for being here, Lori.
Yes, absolutely.
Do I have slides for this? You emailed this to me, didn't you? You did, alright. Share screen, hit the window. How about this one? There we go.
There we go.
If I can't.
Okay, well, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, Lori Dickinson with ICS. Uh, so what we're looking at, um, you can go to the first slide or the next one here, Chris. Um, so this is just a snapshot of, of the agreement that you had with ICS back when you decided that you wanted to, you know, you knew you had some facility needs and, and you hired ICS to help you walk through that process. That phase one, that's where we did that assessment and data gathering and then came up with a plan for the district um, to then decide to bring to voters. So that one was completed um, back in June of twenty-four. And then after that, we uh, went into phase two and that's where we did the, the referendum communication. So we helped you as a district uh, come up with uh, language, marketing material, basically a campaign to help inform your community and, and get the information out about the referendum. Um, now we are to phase three, which it looks like I'm missing, uh, it's actually, looks like phase two, but it is phase three. So I apologize for that. Uh, Dan, you didn't point out my misprint earlier. Maybe you saw that earlier.
Two point O.
Two point O, yes. I'm going to correct it on my PowerPoint so I don't do that again. Um, so that, this is what we call is our implementation. Now we have funding approved. And once funding is approved, then we can move into actually implementing the project and moving into a design. What this requires, so this was part of our original agreement, but ultimately we know when we, we put that agreement together, we didn't know the scope will work or when the funding would be approved. So, oops. So what we do when it comes to phase three is that where we enter into what we call AIA contracts or the project's specific um, uh, design. So that phase three, we're going to go through the, the design of the project and then all the way through construction.
So weird, all of a sudden I can't. That's another option. It didn't disconnect it. It just lost the whole meaning.
Yeah, it disconnected right at the beginning as well, but it turned back on.
Oh, that is weird.
You're disconnected.
So, so, all of a sudden it's, we, it's never done that before. All right, share.
Broke it.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was adding in that other dash mark to make it a three, so I have a two.
Can't do it.
Let me try it this way. Okay, now. That worked, okay. Came on.
Okay, so this, this phase three is, like I said, that's going to be our design and construction of the project and bring to, bring you to the completion of the construction. So if you go to the next slide, um, ICS is, at phase three, we have a delivery model that we're recommending, which we call program management. And what this is, is this is a single source accountability that the district would have one contract with ICS. And ICS would manage all the professional fees within their contract. That way, it's not the district having to navigate and, and work through the different um, professional services. ICS does all of that. Uh, and with that, you can see here, we do, you guys know John and Kat from DSGW. They would be your architect. Um, they would continue to be the architect. Uh, we have CMTA doing our mechanical, electrical and civil. Then we have Northland Consulting Engineers out in Duluth for the structural. They are part of our team and would be part of these AIA contracts that you're looking to, to approve the resolution to, to agree to tonight. Um, along with, under that contract, we also have the construction management and that's overseeing the construction itself. Uh, day-to-day um, construction and overseeing your contractors. So once bids are out and we break ground, we have somebody here at the district that is overseeing all the construction and making sure we're on time, we're, we're answering questions for contractors and, and we're within the budget. Uh, they'll also be going through and, and over, or uh, conducting our construction meetings along with our project oversight committee. Um, contractually, so that is a contract that the district has with ICS. Contractually, your contractors uh, with the funding, it is public dollars, so we have to do low bid. And with that, uh, we, as uh, you have to have those contracts would be contractual to the owner. So ICS would manage the contractors, but the actual contract would go directly to you as a district from the contractor. Um, and that is something that we can't control, that, that is legally how we have to set this up due to the funding source.
So when we buy stuff, we're buying brick and mortar, we're buying materials. That's in that general construction, mechanical contractors. We would be paying them for the stuff and/or procuring through other pipelines.
Yeah, typically, so they're going to invoice you for the, the, the things that they have um, ordered. And we're going to make sure they don't just order them. We're going to make sure it's on site before you actually uh, pay them. So we, we help review those invoices to, to make sure that, to give you confidence that, yeah, that work is being done and it's here on site. Uh, we don't want to run into an issue where they ordered it, but we don't see it and then maybe they, or, you know, it never does show. That, that will get us in trouble, so we're here to manage that for you. But ultimately, the school district would cut the check to the contractor once we say, yeah, that's right.
Got it.
Um, we do also have a retainage that we keep from that. And that's from all the invoices. So at the end of the project, we have some leverage if work is And that's from all the invoices. So at the end of the project, we have some leverage if work isn't being done. We have dollars that the that they have invoiced but haven't been paid yet. And we can say, once all these items are completed, including what we, you know, are their O and M manuals, the operation and maintenance manuals. There's as-built drawings, all the documents that we're requiring them to hand to the district. We make sure that's in hand before we release the retainage and that retainage just keeps them. From, or it just helps them make sure that gets set in on time. Cause it has, you know, that does happen where all of a sudden they disappear. So that retainage is a little, is a way for us to help make sure that the project gets completed on time. And then if there were, Chris, anything. Through a service co-op or any, you know, furniture, if it's innovative furniture, office supply or something. That you're purchasing directly to, I mean, that that would be coming out of that construction budget. That you guys would cut a check for directly. We can help manage it, but you would cut it, you would pay for it. Most contractors, they're not gonna submit like one draw with one receipt on it. They're gonna. Do you have a number of, say, you wanna collect ten bills before they sign it in, or do they just do every single one? We'll set up an agreement where they probably bill us monthly or or bill the district monthly. So we don't want them, you guys to be bombarded by, yeah, every time they get an expense that you get a, that you get a bill. We'll we'll set up in, they will have a separate AIA contractor, contract that goes from them to the district. And within that, we'll talk about the billing and we we help. Create language, craft that language, yeah. But you're right, we don't wanna have a bunch of. Individual expenses, yeah. Do we? Alright, and Theresa, I gotta add you to this list too. I apologize. So this is our project team and.
Missing some names on here, but we'll we'll get that.
We'll add them in on the owner's side. I'm missing some names.
We're missing some names, yeah.
Okay.
We'll fix that.
I'm confident about our 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 design team. And so this is just kinda outlining who we plan to have on the team. From all the different professional services. This isn't all inclusive. This is gonna be more of our main designers and and engineers. But we know that DSGW, they have other people working on their team. These are just gonna be their main point of contact. And Kat probably would be our main person. She'll be the one giving updates on on the design. And and you can see CMTA all, you know, we have three mechanical engineers that are specific to the project, a couple electrical and one civil. Again, they have technicians and other people on their team to help them through the process. These are our main points of contact. And then we have the Northland Consulting Engineers. We will update you as a district and who. Who would be on what we call the project oversight committee.
Yeah, last time when we were meeting, that included our activities director Marley, our two community head coordinators. So that's Lacy and Gents, because they have a lot of knowledge about how gyms and the locker rooms and all that stuff are are used. Josh Blagier, principals on there, Teresa Hoberg. And we didn't have Cindy and Terry, but they would be in a user group as we get into the nitty gritty on the office area, the nurse's office, that kinda stuff, so. Yeah, we'll tighten that up and get that updated.
You can just kinda see who we have as a.
And we are adding Lil Raynard. She's a high school special ed teacher because she's got a lot of knowledge about a lot of those special ed spaces that we talked about. And kinda the intricacies of that, so she's asked to be added to that group.
I'll go through the design process and then I'll touch a little bit on the different. Approval process between the the full time ones, the project oversight committee and then the and and Chris as a superintendent, so.
Why don't we do the design? We have five minutes, why don't we do the design process and then take a pause, yeah.
Okay, so here is what to expect in the design process. We're in the pre-design. As soon as we get contracts approved and signed, we have. Our internal group will be setting up backgrounds, getting some, getting the existing conditions documented. Understanding the scope of work and and getting ready for what we call is a kickoff meeting. And we will, we are scheduled right now, January ninth, to have a kickoff meeting with the district. To to really introduce the entire design team and and kick off the whole design process. Once we get into design, there's three levels in that design process. We have schematic design, which is still pretty conceptual. But making sure that. We understand the scope of work and and what's entailed in the project. We have design development. That's when we get a lot of the, that's a lot of the details and what kind of mechanical systems are we tying into? What are we, you know, what kind of construction are we doing precast? Are we doing block? They're getting more of those details and that's material wise, but they're also meeting with a lot of user groups. So they're gonna wanna understand, you know, what kinda, so we do have a new special ed space. Conceptually, we do. What is that? So what do we really need in there to make this space work for them? And that's where we'll have what we call user groups to understand that, gather a bunch of information. Just so, you know, just in transparency, it doesn't mean they get everything they want. We still have a budget, right? So we'll take that information, try to accommodate as much as we can. And the project oversight committee will help navigate that to make sure that. Scope and budget are still in alignment and and that expectations are met. Finally, we have what you call construction documents. This to me is where we're we're dotting the i's and crossing our t's and it's a lot to do with a specification. Any, any, when you go out for a bid, we have two documents. One is your your drawings, your plan set. And one is a specification book. The specifications are all the details, so we make sure that the contractors, everyone's bidding the same information. Or understand, it tells all the the. What is expected of the construction itself. That's gonna talk about materials. Brands, you know, things that they can and cannot bid. So that's where that construction document would be and that's where we sign off on that. Or that's where we sign off and complete the drawings and then look to go into our our construction. And construction is where we consider the bidding, so we'll go out to contractors. And look for low, we, with this funding, you have low bidders, so we go out, we have multiple different scopes. That we are asking the contractors to bid on. Once bids are received and within budget, then we'll continue. In a recommendation to to accept the bids and then continue into construction. And that's where our design team too, once we get into the kickoff meeting, we'll talk about phasing. You guys have a, definitely have some areas that, you know, we're gonna have two solid summers of construction. But you have areas too, can we get all that work done over a summer? Well, we start looking at your front entrance and that office area and then renovating your your commons. That's a lot of work. And so the design team will have to come up with how do we phase the construction and and make sure that we can. Optimize when kids are out in the building. So that's during the construction. And then looking to wrap up construction, the fall of twenty seven would be the intention. Any questions on the on the design? Phase?
No, and then we'll start with that next slide, as soon as we go with truth and taxation. Do you think you have a question? We'll come back to it here in just a little bit, but sorry to make you pause, Lori.
That's alright. No, we'll play, well, we'll.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, so we are going to jog back up the agenda eight point three. Which is our truth and taxation presentation here scheduled for six P M. And that's five fifty nine. So perfect timing. Theresa over to give the presentation, hello.
Hello.
Michael, are you staying here just for the fun?
Yes.
I mean, I mean, this is your bread and butter.
He's gonna, he's gonna suss me, I'm like.
I did drive nine, I only drive nine hours. I might as well listen to Lori talk about your project.
You're coming back, you're not staying.
This is the hottest thing going on tonight and. Might as well stay.
Room, I packed, we packed the room. Alright, well, welcome public, all those that are maybe, you know, viewing this later than. December twelve at six P M. I'm Teresa Ober, I'm a business manager at Cook County Schools and I'm here to present truth and taxation. Both levy and our budget. The first slide is a slide that the school board has seen numerous times. It's levy cycle. Kind of plays the chorus over three, actually, within three years, but two year process. The levy that's certified in twenty twenty four is paid in twenty twenty five for the school district to use. And fiscal year twenty six, which, you know, enters phase six. So the next slide is kind of the timeline. In more detail, the school district timeline is. In the summer, we collect information, I input things to M D E so that they can shoot up preliminary numbers. That we certify in September. And then if there are referendums like we had this year in November, that can affect what the levy, what happens to the levy. And then between November twenty fifth and December thirtieth, we do what we are doing right now, have a truth and taxation meeting. And then property taxes are collected in twenty twenty five. So then as far as taxpayers' timeline, in April, so in the spring. Taxpayers receive their valuation from the county, the notice in the mail. They have an opportunity to challenge what their valuation is in late spring, early, uh, late spring, early summer. So you usually in June times sometimes. And then in November tenth, mid-November, the county delivers the property tax notices. That have our preliminary numbers on it, so it shows what we certified in September. And then in November now, all taxing. Taxing authorities have their meeting just like this, so they have them at the county. And then in March, the tax statements go out for payable taxes in twenty twenty five. So we can flip to the next page. For the next screen is. A sample. Tax statement that went out. And shows, so this is a great example because on it, it shows the proposed taxes, those are not the actual numbers that will. Be actually taxed to this particular property owner. It has the language on the bottom that says that your school district was scheduled to hold a referendum at the November general election. If the referendum was approved, then these numbers may be different essentially. So that will be the case for all taxpayers in Cook County this year because our certified levy, or excuse me, our preliminary levy was much less than our. Certified levy that we're gonna certify by tonight. So that's just an example. Property taxes are collected on two base tax bases, referendum market value and net tax capacity. Referendum market value excludes. Seasonal rec, so cabins and then the ag land, so whatever's left after the house, garage and one acre. And then net tax pass capacity is the value of all. Property and then you multiply it by a class rate. So then. Based on that. You would determine your piece of the pie expense. The next. Screen kind of shows an example. Of. Four properties of the same value. So residential property, commercial value, seasonal rack and an egg property, all four hundred thousand. And what their taxable market value is, so the residential. Property has a homestead credit applied, so their taxable market value is less. And then what their tech net tax capacity, so what part of their value is taxed, the net tax capacity. And then what the referendum market value, so when you're calculating what tax you owe, you take that value. So for instance, the three thousand eight hundred ninety four dollars over the whole county's value of net tax capacity. So you get your percentage of what you would owe of that pie. And those pies are made of, or there's two pies in our levy, a referendum market value pie and the net tax capacity pie. And any questions on that? Chew on that a little bit, you can figure out your own. I geek out on that, but you know, that's just me. The next slide is provided by PMA, thank you, Michael Hart. They break out, so we're looking at this home value of four hundred thousand and they break it out. As to what is net tax capacity and what is referendum market value. The top three are based on tax capacity, so the. Items that are taxed on all properties in Cook County, not just, not just those residential. So includes the seasonal rec and the ag land. And then the bottom two are the referendum market values, so those that have that homestead and. The bas- basically people who live here, I mean, for the general speaking. And that is where you would find our. Operating referendum. And whereas the big darker bluish gray color would be our. New. Bond referendum.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
How will? Like the new apartment complex that's being built, like how does how does that end up being classified? Is it each individual unit? Like, could that be homesteaded by someone? I guess they don't own them.
So it'll be like, it'll be part of commercial. Yeah.
They're just renting them and so it's a commercial venture, so it's just all commercial.
Right, so the renter themselves don't pay the tax on it, but they do by way of rent.
It's a commercial rate.
Apartments have a, their own classification, so this is, there's like thirty five different classifications.
Sure.
And so we're showing you the most important ones.
Yeah.
But they would have their own classification that calculates that. And tax, but it would be one tax statement for that parcel.
Is that? Does that, do apartments contribute to the referendum? Market?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So it'll just, so that pie, that amount that we are asking for in that. It is just divided up by that more, so it would reduce, right? It's adding to the tax base.
Sure.
So reduce the impact to everyone else because there's more. Value within that tax base. Okay, so yeah, another slide from PMA, this one is showing the same information, showing that four hundred thousand dollar value. Compared over time with inflation, so it's kind of comparing that same house per se. Over time, and as you noticed, we had a kind of like a general downward trend, but then we add our. Bond referendum, so that's where that increase is coming. But if you go to the next slide. It's an interesting comparison to our neighbors and what we, this was actual numbers for last, for twenty twenty four. So you don't see the bond referendum in there yet, but even if we add the bond referendum in there, it's, you know, was what? Five hundred dollars ish, so it still keeps us on that low end as compared to our neighbors as far as what we're paying taxes on a four hundred thousand dollar home.
What was the number we could check? Five twenty six, so five twenty six puts us right here between Mount Arvoo and Way Superior.
I mean, I don't know what they're, all those districts or counties are experiencing too, maybe they've also increased, decreased, whatever, but. Still comparatively. We're not taxing her.
More than our neighbors.
Yeah. The next slide shows the total. The, yep, the total tax levy, so it's showing just the two buckets, the two parts of the pie. The net tax capacity and the referendum market value and then what it makes up in total. So our levy will be three million three hundred eighty nine thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars for twenty, paid twenty twenty five. And so looking at it from a couple different angles. You can also look at it voter approved versus other, so board approved. And this is how it is shown on our tax statements, it's broken out.
Voter.
Voter and non-voter. And then the next one shows just the different. Categories, so the first column is the operating referendum, so the eight hundred dollars per pupil that we have. The voter approved operating referendum. The second column is additional, kind of general per pupil, it's calculated per pupil. But that one is board approved. Then the next one is LTFM's, Safe Schools, Unemployment Insurance, those type of things. And then our debt services, so the first, the first debt service one is the building bonds and the second one is some abatement bonds that we did for the parking lots. And for our tools. And then for those that love looking at numbers, this is all the same information, but just in the number format. And it's showing. And it's showing um. The exact amounts, the highlights here. Um, early childhood education, because there was an increase in net tax capacity, it generated additional funds, so. That's a you rah rah for us in that sense. Um and because now our enrollment is stabilizing and we're getting better at projecting that. Cause for a while there, when we were coming back from COVID, we were probably overacting, so then there were always adjustments, these negative. Um changes to our levy, so that's um leveling off, so we're seeing a little bit of an increase there. And then most of the change to the levy this year is due to the building, the school building bonds. Um, so that's where the large increases from. And then as we talk about the levy, we have to also talk about the budget and this slide is kind of misleading in a way. Um, cause we're talking about our payable twenty to five levy, but we're comparing it to our current budget. So it's really, it skews it a little bit, so if we were to um. Add in revenues that would be similar to the. Um school building bonds, it would probably be about a thirty percent. Payable for levy compared to the rest of the revenue. But we'll see what that shakes out when we're actually putting that into our revenues, so it's kind of a little bit skewed, so we just move on from that one. Um, so our current budget as we approve, that the board approved um. Is appears to be a slight deficit spending, but that is primarily due to three buses that will be purchasing. And um but otherwise, I think the budget is pretty on track and I, I don't see us going. Um, going ask you for it too greatly. Um, there might be some adjustments as we um start spending money. Initially, when the sale of bonds happened, there's an in- an initial payment that wouldn't be in our budget. So there might be a budget revision just because it might be so significant that um it'd be better to revise. So that might come at a later time. Um and then if we were to look at our revenue by source. Um, the levy is included in the local source, so things like our school trust lands, like um. Tax event revenues, delinquent taxes, all the taxes is part of that local revenue. Um, other local sources include donations, athletic fees, lunch purchases. Um, and then our federal sources of income, our title funds. Our federal special ed funds, impact aid and the lunch program. And then of course, our state funds are gen ed formula and whatnot, that's our largest source of funding is from the state. Um and then our, the, the largest portion of our expenses are um our staff, so our people. But seventy percent of the budget is going towards staff and then equally purchase service is another. We could probably lump that in with staff, cause it's things that we have to provide for our, our students, a lot of special ed services like through Northland. That we don't have maybe people in the building for, or they come here and they aren't on our staff. Um and then the, if we pop down supplies and materials and the capital expenditures are. Three buses that will be purchasing here soon. So, but this is a very similar, very common pie chart that we see each year.
So two thirds, in other words, is staff, huh?
Yep.
Yep.
And that's common.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's the way it is.
Um, well, I mean, if you think about the industry, right, we're educating and that's our, that's our tool is people.
We're not manufacturing.
No. Um, so I guess at the end of this meeting is the um board recommendation to certify the levy. At the dollar amount that is presented on the screen, which is also, I believe, promotions, but we don't have to do that exactly now. Cause I have to offer an opportunity for questions. And comments.
Everybody calling in on the bathtub?
Yeah. And if you are watching online after December twelfth, if you have questions, feel free to, to call us at the school. And the district office, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Great, any questions from board members?
Want to thank Teresa for her hard work on this, uh and also thank Michael and the help that you provide in, in. Kind of explaining the ramifications of the bond referendum many, many, many months ago, so we knew full well what, what we were walking into, so. Uh, thank you, no surprises, it's good.
Fantastic, thank you. So, um, let's see. So our eight point four is to approve the final paid twenty five le- levy and the recommendation is to. Approve the amount presented here. Um, of three million three hundred eighty nine thousand four hundred and ninety six and seventy eight cents.
Correct.
Roundup, no, just kidding.
That's not here. I'm taking motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Oberg, you can go print your document.
Yeah, I can get it to go, doesn't like it. But I will go print it, see if I can get it to go. Yeah.
Who has to sign it?
The clerk. Or no?
All right, Ms. Laurie, come on back up here, let's find your other slides.
Okay, so we just did eight point three was the presentation and eight point four was the approval of the final levy. So we are going back to eight point five. Of our discussion uh with Laurie from I C S on the next steps for the building project.
One second. All right.
Okay.
Okay, as we step into this, I want to um shed light on something that I didn't, and when I, as I teed it up. Cause we're gonna be walking now into I see kind of like how is the board involved and some of that conversation. Um, the approval tonight, if you look in the weeds of your agenda, what, what actually the resolution. Does is it authorizes me to step into negotiating and agreeing to these agreements? That are also linked in your board agenda, so it's all in the board agenda, it's all transparent. Um but so you understand what happened with those agreements. Um, first of all, I got a proposal from I C S for the two agreements for both the construction managing, management and the. Architecture agreements, which are both in your packet. Um, then we walked through it in detail. Then uh I went ahead and reached out to Kennedy and Graven, a legal attorney uh to pour through it on our behalf. Um, I tend to like to use Kennedy and Graven, it's a law firm that I worked with over my career. Um and the attorney there, Peter Martin, had recently done a project with I C S, so it. They were able to grab what they negotiated with Goodridge, was it, I think? Um and provide that as kind of a template. Um, so we got that and then I gave it to Peter, Peter walked through it, got back to me a four page document of recommendations and suggestions and things to talk to Laurie about. Then I met with Laurie and uh the president, Andy, right? Remember all these names, um then we poured through then all of the suggested changes from Peter Martin and embedded them in there. And then Laurie uh kicked back the drafts that you see in your packet tonight, so that's kind of the product after all of that vetting. Uh and then um I didn't want to sign anything that wasn't transparent to the board and to the public, and so we put it in our board packet tonight for the whole world to see. It'll be um archived there and then we did invite Rena and Dan because of the flexibility in their work schedules. We're not work schedules, um to come in here at three thirty today and kind of walk through it with. Um Laurie, um so that we have another chance for some other people to be involved and Dan and Rena both asked great questions. Rena with her experience with these contracts with county and others has been helpful, so. Um, we did all that due diligence to get to this place where we're ready to say, all right, we're ready to sign these agreements. And Laurie's walking through kind of at a really high level of what's in those agreements in a really legally in the weeds level. So this is way easier to read than those thirty page documents by far. Fifty eight page documents. Um, so thank you, Laurie, for summarizing it, it's a lot easier to read on a flow chart than it is in those agreements, much appreciated, so. That one, we left off with the design process, how long do you think that design section there, schematic design, redesign? How long do you think that'll take?
So I'm anticipating that that will go until the summer of twenty five.
So this coming summer?
This coming summer, the design will be finalized and we will be looking at and exploring. When we go out for bid, uh cause there is some strategy behind that to make sure we're capturing contractors. Um getting the best bids uh from contractors, we don't want to do it in July. Cause they're so busy, nobody's looking at how am I, they, they're not looking at documents to bid, they're trying to get through a summer. Take advantage of summer construction, so I'm anticipating. Design will go till the end of summer of twenty five, we would end up um going out for bid probably in the fall of twenty five.
October, November, December.
Oh, yes, correct, yep, it used to be the case where um similar to what uh Michael Hart was saying about um. Uh sale of bonds would be January is your sweet spot. Um, that used to be what we would consider the sweet spot of bidding. Uh COVID put a big wrench in that, so we are now seeing that it's, it's a, it's better to go earlier. And and guarantee if we want to break ground in the spring of twenty six.
Right.
Um, earlier gives them a better chance of ma- uh getting their materials and and mobilizing. Uh and contractors are used to that now, so they're, they're looking for bids or they're looking for projects to bid. Earlier, they're looking to fill their next summer earlier versus it used to be they were looking in January, so. Um, and the bidding phase is usually a, a four to six week process that we, that we have bids out available that are being advertised. One thing too, just to note during that bid phase, I C S is actively reaching out to contractors. And it'll be part of the P O C conversation also, is if there's local contractors. We want to be contacting them and making sure they're aware of the project. Making sure they're bidding it, we try to get a, we can see who's looked at it through a program called Procore. But we want to make sure they show up on bid day and the more bids we could get per scope, the better um, the more competitive is. And the better you, a chance that we have to get, to get everything filled and a project that we can be awarded. Uh so that, that's kind of what you can see in the next twelve, twelve months.
Do those bids come back to the, the board for approval or does that depend on the next slide?
Uh, that would come back to the, if, if the next slide is an example of a, a matrix, approval matrix, but yes, to, it comes back to the board. A, a board recommendation on to approve the contracts is that, that's a level of approval we're looking for.
All right.
And. So this is, like I said, this is an example and this is something, um the project manager that we have on from I C S is Damian Williams. Um, this will be something reviewed at one of the early P O C meetings and what this is, is just giving you an idea of. We have the full school board, we have the project oversight committee and then we have the superintendent. What is their responsibility and what's our approval process? And this is not what Cook County is doing one hundred percent, um but this is what. You can kind of expect as we're saying, okay, we can't have everything always come back to the board. Cause it would, it, it'd be so time consuming or it would require you to have a lot of special board meetings. So there's a reason to have different layers of approval to make sure that the process can, can be streamlined and, and efficient. Um, but at the board level, you guys would approve this matrix saying, we all agree, this is how we're gonna go through this construction project. Um, so this here where we're looking at like minor schedule modifications, the P O C would be. Yeah, give us the green light that we can have those minor ones, major, we're gonna have a major schedule, change in the schedule. Um, let's look at probably, we, that would be something we'd say the board typically would want to be part of that conversation and that approval. Again, these are examples, so it could change, budget review, um. The P O C is gonna see that ea- at each one of their meetings and then the school board is gonna probably see it at those three key design phase. Um, that's schematic, design development and construction, so you guys will both see that, there's, there's no real approval process. But you guys would see that and review it. Um, that three point or three A that said um bid review and approval, so that's that contractor, typically we see the full board. Design changes, if they're minor, the P O C, that's something that we want, you're gonna meet more often. So we want you guys to be able to say, yeah, it's a minor change, go ahead and, and incorporate that. Anything major, again, that would want to come back to the full school board. Um, change orders, this is more so once we get into construction. Um, so we get into construction and something comes up, uh you do have what we call a contingency fund. And that contingency fund is set aside dollars that we have set aside to, to address things unknowns perhaps. Or something you might want to add in, cause it makes sense at the time. Typically, what we'd see on a project like this is if that change order is around thirty thousand or less. We would give Chris or the superintendent authority to say yes or no. This keeps our project moving forward and, and not uh hang up if something comes up during the design, during the construction day. We have small periods of time without kids in the building, we don't want every change order to have to go back to the P O C or the, or the school board. If it's around that, if it's between thirty or fifty thousand dollars, then we'd be looking at the P O C to, to say, yeah, go ahead. You know, we have some school board members on that. Along with other administration, let's let them have the authority, anything over fifty thousand dollars that that change would come back to the school board. This is a typical on the size of project that we have seen in the past. Um, that's all talking about um change orders when you're within budget, okay? That's saying that you still have contingency and you have funds to work with. If perhaps you don't have funds, then we have um, we have a lower threshold than different um. We, yeah, we, we come back to the school board, if we're saying we have no funds available, we need to come back to the school board, you know, so that's. Can we do this, are we willing to pull from maybe other funding buckets of, of money that we can add to it, so? Um and then a construction agreements, um general conditions, there's just the superintendent, anything under fifteen thousand. Um, you know, let's say we need to do a survey, but if it's under fifteen thousand. Um, Chris gives the go ahead, yep, let's go do it, soil borings, we have things that we're gonna have to agree to. Yep, do that, if it's above, then the school board would, would have that approval. So that is typically what you would see um and let, you can change any of this, okay? So if you guys say we would rather, we don't want to mess around until Chris can make decisions up to fifty thousand, we can do that, we've seen that. If you're like, we're uncomfortable, we want it down at twenty or fifteen, we can do that too. It's really your comfort level, but then you understanding what that might do in our timeline.
And so you expect to be um looking at this in January or February?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. At that board, maybe potentially at that January twenty third board meeting, or it could be at the next one, but.
Oh, sorry.
Any questions about this?
But if you wanted to, you could do Chris and the board members that are on that. P O C.
We could switch anything to the P O C, correct, yep.
Are you, you, you mean?
I mean, just Chris and those two.
Yeah. Like if it's summertime and the teachers are. Interesting.
Just because then your insights there, I mean, I feel like.
It's, yeah, kind of like an executive committee sort of thing.
Right, yeah, we could do that too. That'd make sense.
I think in a way it makes sense and be, you know, more. People would probably.
Streamline, yeah.
Like instead of just the superintendent, you think, or having like another buck, like another.
Maybe instead of the P O C, which has a lot of staff members on it.
Yeah.
Which just different level of accountability, I think.
Sure.
Fair, fair, that's. Just a thought.
And it, and it might depend on, I think, what the change is too, you know, like sometimes the P O C might. The experience in that group, you know, might help make that decision, but also. The experience in that group, you know, might help make that decision, but also may not be necessary, might just kinda bog it down.
Great suggestion.
Interesting to think of.
Yep, because I feel like I'd be more comfortable with moving some of those to you, no offense, if you guys are on with that discussion.
It doesn't necessitate a full P O Cs.
Right.
And and just keep in mind too, when we say approval. That does not mean Chris is in a bubble and doesn't talk to anyone about this. Um, we, we would highly suggest like this is being talked about, this is exposed, you can make some phone calls. But we don't have to have an organized meeting to necessarily make that approval. Um, I always think it's been to, I mean, it's transparent and and we have enough meetings that most things, if it was of any significance, aren't. It it's not coming out of the blue, right? And and more people are involved.
Right, so that's just the worry is, oh, you proved this and then you didn't then Rena's like, oh, that would've been nice to know. Yeah.
Well, and I feel like it's kinda siloed, like, you know, if we go ahead with this. You know, having like a subcommittee, whatever you wanna call it, with you guys. And then however it looks, is there a way that it could still get communicated to us without a. You know, just an email without a full board meeting, cause that's where I kinda blew my stack a couple times in the uh. Formulation process and maybe that would alleviate some of that.
Keep you in the know.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I still reserve the right to blow my stack, but.
Well, it's, it's, you know, it, we're about to turn the corner on a new year. You know?
Yeah, that that was funny right there.
But it's sort of like the memo and the thing that we had like our board notes kind of thing, sort of like, like a. A project man, uh, yeah, that is kind of keeping those salient sort of things that are happening. Sort of at the front of the board, yeah.
We, we for sure, um, for sure, once we get into construction on Fridays. There is a weekly update, a weekly construction update that would be emailed to Chris and Chris can distribute that in your board update if you do that Fridays.
I do.
Um, and then during the design, we can look at that too. I, I don't wanna commit that they do that every Friday. Uh, during design, but I know they give updates um, that that can be distributed out. So you're right, Eric, it's not. This isn't intended to leave anybody out of any communications. It's just. The actual approval piece of it, it helps helps move it along.
Well, I appreciate as many meetings as possible.
So yes, we will continue to update the entire board and everyone, um, so they know what is happening. And we also, even if uh, there isn't any approval, we typically, you know, our. Project manager, it's very common for them to attend a board meeting and give an update on where we're at. So. Next steps, this is just kinda looking at what you can expect. So we did have an internal kickoff meeting yesterday with. With our design team, just cause I know they're anxious to get going. Um, and we're hoping we can kinda hit the road running on Monday, once we have it tomorrow, if we're. If the resolution gets approved tonight, then we can move through and and get this kicked off on Monday. Um, tonight, we are looking at approving the resolution to approve um, the contracts. And then starting the design um, on December sixteenth. That kickoff meeting I have early January, we're looking at January ninth as a owner kickoff meeting with the P O C. Uh, user group meetings in January and February will be pretty heavy. I'm not saying they would end in February, but that's probably when the majority will happen. Our design phase, we talked about that a little bit um, with our bid phase and then construction really looking at that. Spring of twenty six to to break ground. Um, there is a lot of conversation on how we're gonna phase this. So this is a, this is. Um, a little tentative and I rely a lot on our architects, engineers and construction manager and project manager. To help us lay this out in these early phases on on what is that gonna look like on the on the construction side. So tentatively, this is what you can expect. It might change slightly. What I can be confident about is our goal is fall of twenty seven, all constructions done. And that that's something I'm I'm pretty firm on as far as.
That's somewhere we might have to delay school a couple weeks, Eric.
We, we already, that's great question, Eric, is Chris and I were talking a little bit. I know you guys, is it April that you approve your calendar?
No, later than.
No, later than. Um, so we might wanna be strategic in that first meeting with with um, the P O C. On, or we keep that on our agenda, like how do we wanna be strategic on school out and school start? That summer that we're trying to get that uh, the commons area renovated. Extra week or two, I mean, that would be, that would be big if and if we still think we can do it, so yeah.
But that'd be summer twenty six, right? Or twenty seven, that's.
I I don't wanna commit to what is, what projects are gonna be done um, when, uh, you know, your gym, your gym, weight room and locker rooms. Those are pretty standalone, you can, you could even have, schools could be going on and that can be happening, right? We can isolate that. Entry into your building and and moving from this end of the building to the other. Yeah, those those are things that. We're gonna, we we still are, my design team is, we talked about it yesterday, we need to come up with a game plan and it's just not set yet.
So the end, the the long, quick answer to your question, Eric, is is we will need to account for it in the calendars. We just don't know how yet.
Uh, so twenty seven, twenty eight could be a long, like knocking on the fourth of July, basically. In the June of twenty eight, cause if you start a little later.
The summer of twenty seven could be a long summer.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be done in twenty seven, all twenty seven.
So, right, but you, but I, the he's saying we might not start later that summer.
Borrowing time for, yeah, and then.
Or get out early.
Back, yeah.
Get out, get out early the spring before.
Or both.
Or both, to buy two weeks of construction. I mean, those are things we'll have to rely on our experts to help us with, but. We have a lot of, we have a lot of capability to do that. It just means we gotta sacrifice the time in the middle of the year when we're.
No snow days and use those.
Right, you know, and winter break and spring break and fall break and all the.
Right, you could trim.
Yep.
Um, I have a question. It's, cause we're done with this after this, right? I like it's personnel and that's it. So board notes talked about question two or three, is that done or what?
That is a conversation that I wanna open up as soon as we're done with this. So let's finish this up and then let's go to that.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that intro.
Any questions on next steps? Or anything on on the, what to expect going forward?
So it's just, um, just clarify, what what we're being asked to approve tonight is. Uh, contracts with I C S.
The, the language actually authorizes Chris to.
Just find.
To sign contracts, negotiate and sign contracts. Um, and the negotiation piece, they're in there, so you guys can see what those contracts are. Um, and the beginning of that resolution just outlines what the contracts are for. It's for that question number one. To construct, um, do the design services and construction management.
And basically the contracts that we we looked through and we talked through earlier today, I mean, they've basically been negotiated, right? I mean, at this point, the.
That, that is really whole.
That's all, they're not really gonna change based on what we've already, we've we've looked at. It's just basically we're authorized a Chris to sign it. Is at this point, they're kinda done.
And they're in your packet for full transparency, so everyone can see when I'm signing.
And there, um, there are these, I have a physical copy, there are these A I A. Contracts, which is like a standard form. It of these types of professional services, like they, all the, the industry uses this contract, right?
That's single or double?
There's two contracts.
Oh, it's single, okay, I was gonna say.
But there's two contracts, but and Rena and I have both read them and discussed them at length, the.
How do you feel about them?
Um, well, good. I have a couple of questions because the one, the kind of the big thing, and she sort of touched on this on that flow chart. Um, in terms of like, who manages who and who has contracts directly with who? Like, we basically have a con, the way that's set up is we have a contract with I C S or. All of the professional services, like all the architect work, all the engineering, all those things. Would usually constitute about like fifteen percent of a project. On the other eighty five percent is the actual building. But there's all the like engineering and all the drawing and all the management, all those like professional components. Um, and so we, the way that these are outlined are agreeing to hire them. And basically pay them all of that money and then they hire and manage the actual architect. Like, so D S G W is gonna report to I C S. We're gonna pay I C S and they're gonna pay D S G W. So we only have to deal with that.
Yep.
For that part of it.
For that part of it. Obviously, we're gonna interact with them, but just in terms of like the actual contract, which is what you're looking through. So we're not gonna have like ten different contracts with all these different entities that we have to kinda like juggle. Um, and so that was kinda my main question because we end up paying I C S a lot of money. But it's actually all the money that's being paid for all the professional services. You know, which is like industry standard, like fifteen percent of the price.
And that amount is already set, right?
Yep.
Right, that one, that's fixed.
At about three point six.
Six million.
Five five.
Yep.
It doesn't change if your bids come in differently than what it changed then.
Yep, right. So, so.
Yeah, so then the the rest of that pool of money that we get, we will pay out.
To all the people on the right hand side of that flow chart.
To the actual contractors or buying stuff or whatever. But they, but their construction manager will still be providing oversight. We just pay the bills directly on that side. On the other side, we just give them a little some money and they worry about that. So if it, if the cost overrun or whatever, there, it's a fix.
So it, the the nice thing about this in comparison with like the last bond project that we did here is. It just, it cleans up the process so much more, like we had all these problems with the construction last time. And not going right and whatever, and it was, it was a mess. Getting that finished and dealing with it. Um, and this, cause we didn't have an arrangement like this, we were dealing with the architect and the builders and kinda everybody. Um, and it and it was a mess and the superintendent, that's not like what they do and the board is involved in like a. Was kinda in the weeds frankly, in that project. Um, so it was inefficient and whatever. So in this kind of an arrangement, it just makes it everything be a lot more efficient. And um, efficient, more efficient for our staff's time, et cetera, so. And I think you end up paying about the same amount anyways, you know?
So.
Well, cause everybody's time is valuable.
Right. Yep.
Also, I'd answer to your question, um, this, it's A I documents, very standard.
Right.
Um, I don't know, you've seen them before, but I just got done reviewing them for the transfer station. Same. Really kind of same thing, they're really standard. In terms of responsibilities and roles and licensing and all that stuff, it's a lot of what's in. So, yeah, I was good with them.
Well, I thank you to you both for putting in the time and kinda review with Lori. I, I did it and I did my job and I did it with due diligence with our legal, but it's always good to just. Have another set of eyes on it, so thank you for that.
Like that kinda standard then, when the school takes care of that other portions, those low bids?
That is legally you have to, yep. That that we don't have a choice unless we were to potentially use different funding mechanisms. Uh, there is something that, there there is one way kind of around that. But not with taxpayer dollars, the way that the voters approved it. So we have to legally do that. And we legally have to take low bidder. Uh, so that's something too that. That we won't have a choice on, uh. Very, very minute option if if there, that you maybe could get around it, but I just. You really, with taxpayer dollars, you just really can't. So we won't recommend.
That's the need for really good specs.
Yep, right. And then also.
On the front end.
Right.
Um, really, I. Also, um, getting the bidder, the contractors that we know are good to the table.
Yeah.
That's really important too. We can't always control that they'll be low bidder. But making sure that they are bidding on it is is critical because. The, you guys are gonna do a project, okay, maybe once every seven, ten, twenty years, right? I C S, we do projects, multiple projects per year. So contractors that we work well with and that that they know that we have good specs and drawings. Um, they, they don't, they wanna work well with us, cause we work together on many, many projects. So it it is something where we, we know how different contractors work and we can get them to the table. Because they, they like working on our projects and they know how we manage a project. Your location is gonna have some limitations. I'm not gonna kid you, but but that's built into when we develop the budget too, is we. We understood that, so that's in there, part of them, that can uh, budget estimate.
So you mentioned this earlier when you were talking about the kinda re- holding back some of the. Like when we're being invoiced, we hold back some of that. Um, was that? How does that end up working? So and and are you, you're referring to like on the construction cost side on that, on that column? Cause we're getting invoice for, you know, a thousand dollars, call it. Are you, and since we're paying them directly and that's not part of like the fee that is being passed through you guys? Um, are you advising us on how much less we pay them or how does that end up getting managed? You know what I mean?
There is a standard retainage fee, so every pro, every invoice. Would be a standard amount that you would withhold from that payment. Um, and we will guide you through that, but yeah, that, it doesn't change. It do, it's not like. This contractor, we're gonna withhold five hundred dollars to date, no.
Percentage based.
Twenty percent, yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's based on that, like, payment application.
Yes.
So it's, it's all.
Standard.
Yeah, it's like a spreadsheet that it calculates it and.
Okay.
Does he sign off on it? There's.
And we even do that on other things, like some of our boiler project stuff, you know, we held back on last payments.
That's equally a standard.
Full standard procedure. Yeah.
Building procedures.
Good question.
And with like the low bid, how do you vet so? That you do not get, say, contractors that we probably really don't. Want or have a good reputation. I mean, there's no way around that.
There's not a way around it, but once we receive low bids, we vet out the contractors to make sure they included everything. Uh, make sure that they can meet the schedule, make sure that, you know, they understand the the, the, um. Well, the expectations, I guess. And, you know, you might, you you might have someone who really bombed it. And they're like, for sure they forgot something. Well, we give them an opportunity and if they said they have everything on the drawing, it's on them. If they um, forgot something and are go, and and accept it, they might pull their bid out. If they, if they realize they may have forgotten something.
So we did this recently, and this will jog your memory, but when we did the bids for the boilers, we had, I think, four or five bids. Um, and one was starkly lower than the others, yeah, but we, I wanna say like two hundred thousand dollars difference. And A R I is who we were working with at the time, and we said, well, we have to go with low bid, but you better do due diligence. And make sure they understand what the heck's in this bid. And so they took twenty four, forty eight hours and they all had phone calls with them and they vetted. The vetting, right? Like, did you understand the bid? Do you have everything on there? Are you sure you have the capacity to do this? And they did, so we went with them and they did a good job. Uh, but it was weird. It was a, it was a huge difference and we, we got the benefit of that uh, this time around, it worked. Um, but that's the vetting, right? Like, are you sure you got it all in there?
Correct.
Well, in that vetting process, I mean, so in that kind of example, you're sort of putting pressure back on them.
Right.
To potentially withdraw their bid, but is there like a formal way for us to like disqualify a bid as like not meeting the requirements?
Uh, there was a very, very small. Um, loophole that you could do that and you could, like, let's say they have some legal ramifications. From the past and they've had been written up for other things, you could maybe justify not accepting their bid. Or if they have any sort of, um. Uh, yeah, like kinda like their bid bond that they haven't paid other projects or they, you know, have financial troubles.
Yep.
You, you could potentially. Uh, but then, but.
Exposure there, yeah.
Typically, we, you know, it doesn't work.
Sure.
So that, that's a very small, small percentage that that would even apply or or work. Um, but we do require, you know, you'll have to have a bid bond, you have to acknowledge that they've seen all the addendums. Um, so they have to have certain components of their bid to eat, to make sure they qualify. And they have to turn their bid in on time and stamp approval. So there's lots of things that we're checking. Stamp approval. So there's lots of things that we're checking the boxes to make sure that they are good contractors and. And are able to do the project.
Sounds like the boiler thing is having a outlier like in twenty twenty four, this stuff just doesn't happen because everything's so expensive and.
I mean, some people though, they're like, you know, I don't want to do that project. I'm too busy, but if I get it for this, great, I'll do it.
I think we had some of those bits.
You know?
Yeah, where they put a big number out there.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
See that too.
But we know how hard it is to work in Cook County, so we're gonna slap that price on it, you know?
Or or you can see the opposite, you know, maybe this contractor has submitted four bids and continued. Never didn't receive any of them and now they don't have work for the next summer. They may lowball it just to guarantee their kind their employees have work to do.
Sure, sure.
I mean, there it goes both ways. Yeah, it's the market, yeah.
So the resolutions in your package, uh, you can see exactly what you're voting on. Uh, and uh, it's in our prints of things to sign tonight, so it'll just get signed tonight if it's. Approved by the board, otherwise we'll continue on with. Questions and discussions. Welcome, Carrie.
Sorry, guys, embarrassed. Did I even come? But this is what I've had, so.
Yeah.
We're on eight point six.
I see that. I'm not able to open the resolution, which is weird to me.
Are you getting like a dry bear?
Can't reach reach this page, is it?
I was getting those from my computer too, and then I logged on to my district one and they were working.
Oh, weird.
So, I don't, yeah.
Normally do it from my computer and don't, I'm not used to having problems with it.
Yeah, it was kind of, yeah.
It's a big long resolution, authorize a meter sign uh contract.
I'll make a motion that we uh approve this resolution.
I'll second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is, the resolution is adopted. Okay.
Thank you, Miss. Would you mind if we go down to that question two question before we go to personnel?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Since we're here and Lori's kind of and it's on it's on point.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Is there a different agenda than the one?
No, it's not on the agenda. This is this is just like a continuation of the conversation we just had. So we're talking about. Implementation of cut construction of question one. Um, and in some sidebar conversations I've had with people since November fifth, sixth, whenever the election was. Um, there's been a lot of question to me about, well, is question two dead? Or is there an opportunity to ask the question again? And I've probably gotten that question from. Ten or fifteen people, staff to parents of athletes to, you know, people. Um, and so I thought it relevant enough to do a little thinking about it and then throw it back at the board and say. It's really a board decision of whether you want to start noodling around. Should we take a second run? If so, when? And if so, should we think of some other funding like ideas? So um I happened to be going to the M R E A conference about two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And I know I C S is always there, and so I threw the question that Jeff Schultz. Lori, and he came up with like ten random ideas that we might think about for like seed money for something if we were to go out again. Because I asked him to be creative, like, what if we just want to have this a different way? Everything from I triple R B asking them for some funding at to the legislature, to the Minnesota Vikings, to. Um, getting the free bleachers from Duluth that we talked about before to some kind of capital investment. So he put together all these schematics and I said, okay, some of these are worth talking about and some of them probably aren't. Um, but I don't even want to go down that road if the board doesn't want to go down that road. I don't want to waste my time investing in something that's. Not gonna happen. Um, what I will say, I I will recommend to the board is if if there's a desire to go back to voters, there are four dates in the year when we can do it. Legally, I believe they are April, uh, help me, Lori.
Five.
Five?
February, which we're.
Past.
February, April, May, August and November.
Right, February. May, April, August, November. And when I was looking at those dates and I was thinking about the legwork to vet things and all of that. And looking at having to figure out. How an election would happen because we would have to either run it or ask the county to run it for us and pay the county to do it. This is about a fifteen ish thousand dollar price tag. Um, I think November of next fall would be the right recommendation. Um, it would be an off year. There's no other elections going on in Cook County, so there's no city, county. Federal, state elections. It would be, this would be the only thing on the ballot. Um, I talked to Brady. Powers, right? Uh, and we kind of vetted through with the help of M S B A that in Cook County, it would likely be a hundred percent mail in ballot situation. Um. And I looked at the voting data and the two precincts that would could be in person voting. Were the two Grand Ray districts that voted all in favor of question two, uh, unlike the outskirts. So it it would make sense to go a hundred percent voting. Uh, mailing. So as I got to that point, then I thought, well, I'm gonna stop now and I'm gonna ask the board, like. Should we be vetting ideas and brainstorming options and like thinking about ways to go at this? Or is this like debt and the voters have spoken and we put it aside? If it's dead and we want to go after it two, three years from now, we lose the economy of the scale of all the contractors and everyone being here. If it was approved as soon as November of next year, we could take advantage of I C S and the contractors and. Everyone being here and the efficiencies of scale that 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 offers. So it's kind of one of those. It's either dead and it's dead for a while, a while, a while. Or if we're gonna take a second run at it, we got about twelve months to knock it out. Thoughts, um, worth investigating further? Don't waste your time, Lynn Holmes.
I would look at your other routes other than vote personally.
I agree. I mean, the voters spoke, I mean.
I think though, is it possible that because it was a good turnout, it was detrimental to us? Right? Because I think what Chris is expressing and I could be wrong, so please correct me if I'm wrong. But the people that are going to turn out for a non presidential election of off year. Are the people who have really strong feelings. And are there more really strong yeses or really strong nos?
I think that's.
I think I think it's an interesting.
I think that'll go either way.
Yeah, so I think it's possible that another round could go. I I don't, I just, it'd be interesting. It might not be as obvious as like.
Numbers of how many people voted in Cook County for how many actually voted for the referendum, because I'm.
We have, yeah, we have the.
Like how many voted and didn't even fill out our stuff, you know what I mean?
Uh, well, we have a yes, no, and.
It doesn't account for how many votes.
Right, I I didn't fill it out would be a no vote, right?
Yeah.
No.
No.
You had to actually vote.
I did vote, no.
So we have a yes and a no. That's the number we have.
I just wonder how that correlates to the.
If you added those two numbers up, the yes and the no compared to like.
And we can look at some of those.
Well, so you know, kind of to Carrie's point, um. Doing this bond referendum during a presidential election, the advice was always that's risky, don't do it.
Yeah.
And it was with likes, they the consultant looked at the demographics and voting history of Cook County was like, well. You guys have a reasonable shot of getting this thing passed um based on historical information. Otherwise, it would not be the recommendation to do it, right?
Actually pretty close-ish, you know?
And so there's something to to be said about that, like just on the question of it, does it have a chance of passing or not? Like if you if that's the only question we're asking about, whether we should do it or not, that's not what I'm saying. I think, does it have a chance of passing if we do it next November when it's not a presidential election? Yeah, I think we probably have, you know, following the advice of the people that study this.
They say this.
Say it would be a good a good idea. Should we do it, you know, since the voters have have spoken?
Yeah, isn't a good turnout what we strive for and then should we just let it lie? Well, here's a note spoke.
Well, here's here's what I'm thinking. Well, one, the need still exists, right? That that's not going away. We still don't have a track.
We don't still don't have a bus shop.
Dog bus shop, all those things. All those things still exist, but maybe.
They get a decent bathroom, a bit more of them.
Maybe we didn't talk to, you know, maybe we didn't talk to the voters in the right way about it, or maybe we need to have another feedback loop and maybe there's some adjustments to the project. That would make it more palatable to the voters again, you know, maybe there's something that.
That's a lot of stuff to do when we got all this stuff going.
Well, I know, but.
Here's the other thing, though, if there are some other funding sources, I mean, I I think we should keep the conversation going. I'm just gonna state that first, but if there are some other funding sources, let's say I triple R B says, hey, you know, it was however much was it six? Nine million. We we'll throw three million at it. Now we could maybe. Say, hey, we've got money coming in from something, some other source, so we can get this thing for less money. And now and now bond for that difference. I mean, I think, you know, that I I think I think we. Should keep our options open at this point, and I'd say.
Guys, I'm there with you. I think at least keeping my options open.
But because, I mean, there may be an another way to configure this, that it's not the same question. That that.
But we want the same stuff.
Yes, but there may be other funding that doesn't have to come from the voter referendum.
Do you think that the voters rejected the number or the stuff? Because I kind of think they rejected the number.
They rejected the number.
I think it's a little bit of both.
I think some people rejected the stuff.
Really?
Yeah. Looking at what their taxes were.
I think it's solidly, it was a lot of sports stuff in there and I think people that ask me questions, ask questions about priorities. And number one said something about our priorities to some main streamlined academics also. A lack of asking for like the science and that we already did that, right? So we asked for a lot of sports stuff. And I definitely heard people respond to that a little bit. We're asking for a lot of.
Most of the questions I got, people who had a bad experience going to school here in the past, it's a variety of things.
See, I got the opposite. I just got, oh, mine, what do we need that admin for? We need this for stuff.
Oh, funny. Although I'm starting to distrust Rena and I, we choose the same darn shoes. So I can't even. Can't even take this discussion seriously when we show the same shoes. That's fun.
With the vote, putting that out, you said a brown fifteen thousand, but then if you gotta do a mail, how how much does that add? A mailing out and a mailing back.
I'm giving you just total ballpark numbers. Uh, it's it's ten to thirty thousand dollars, depending on how big your district is, how many things you have to station. Um, I think I in my conversation with Brady, he said that the twenty fifteen referendum, the county ran for the district and it was a hundred percent mail in. Um, so we could look back at that, um, and he threw napkin math of fifteen grand at me for that. Um, so I think realistically, that's a ballpark number and. That comes out of our general fund. It's it's, you know, we gotta we gotta run it. I would be, I would strongly advise having the county run it and not asking Kay and me and Teresa to all of a sudden figure out how to run a general election because.
Well, we might end up spending more than fifteen thousand dollars an hour.
They've got it mechanized and they know how to do it, so like just do it.
Well, and the other part of that that too is if we were, you know, just sort of understanding that these kind of needs. Continue to exist and it's an issue that we're gonna have to continue to grapple with and and try to solve probably. Um, if we do it a lot further out in the future, it's gonna cost more.
What are these needs you speak of?
Well, we don't have a track.
I don't see that as a need.
You don't think so?
I don't think so. I mean, and I say this as a parent of a proud parent of a track student. It's six weeks out of the year and I think that's what some of the voters responded to.
Well, I think, but I think that part of the messaging that was not maybe as good as it could have been was. It all it it's, we have a track program and no track, but we also. In implementing this facility, it's gonna open up use for lots of other things. So maybe just six weeks of the track program, but it's a community asset. We don't have a track in Cook County, period.
Is it also something that we could revitalize the field we have and add the track and downsize four million to one point five?
Well, that's and and maybe and that's why I was wondering, like, maybe there's a modification to the project. Maybe we don't just go and ask for the same thing again, but maybe there's.
Right.
You know, what's the issue here? Like, how do we, how do we modify this to make it palatable? Because, yeah, as it was, it wasn't. It wasn't a yes, but can we make it a yes if it was this or if it was that, if it was?
I'm sure it was removing everything out there. You're removing bleachers that really. And my eyes are.
To be sufficient for now, you know?
You know, they're not dilapidated or falling down or there's things that just needs a facelift. It doesn't need a whole new, we don't need a turf field. We don't need. Certain things, but.
Well, and now.
Well, the turf the turf field though did allow for girls softball, which we we we're not having that happen either right now. I mean. It's just a matter of time till the city takes down the park where those kids play.
And no, they will never take that down.
They were trying to. I think never is a strong word, but something to consider.
We could get that property if we wanted it.
I mean, the other thing is on kind of the planning front is.
No, the ball field over here.
Well, that's a different, but the girls are practicing at the rec park and they have.
Yeah, but but last year they were playing more here than they ever have.
They started.
But we kind of have I C S at our disposal right now too, which in terms of like supporting. Some exploring some of this, you know, we're sort of within the bubble of them being able to help us with that right now. Yeah, you know, as this pushes out that that we won't, you know, we would have to like repay for that if we were gonna kind of do that too. So. There's just some things about the fact that we're the sort of. Have all of this going on, you get use can benefit from that economy of scale and make it not as expensive if we were to do it again in the future, so.
And I don't think it has to be this or like, do we go with the exact, it's this and, right? Do we look at additional funding sources? Do we modify what we're asking for and how do we? Repackaged in a way that's the most beneficial, because it would be if we found another funding source that would cover. A a decent chunk, right? And we could say, well, no, we we believe this is a really big need. We have a funding source, we've modified to kind of the essentials and let's get these things for our students, I think. Multiple pathways kind of say something different to our community. That's not no way, it's not that we didn't hear you.
I think I think it does say, we still think this is important. And so we're willing to relook at the way we've done this to see if there's a way that's more economical for the community or. You know, that still makes the same basic goals. So I I think it's, I think it should still be on the table. Who knows where that's going, but I don't think we're done with the discussion here. That's my opinion.
And I'm also not ready to say, like, sign us up just like we were for November, you know, like, let's, let's talk about.
So, um.
Some strategy.
If that's the case, then the board needs to know that, just like. In order to be ready for November, this last time around, we had to vote by June for what that question was. So that gives us a, the clock starts ticking now, so we would have. The next four or five months to be having some conversations about how to reframe things, how to six months total, yep.
The spring primary in twenty six is too long to kind of utilize these guys.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and and the idea of next November is there's nothing else on the ballot. So you you're not bringing people out for, and that's a strategy that many districts very, very specifically go after.
Different here is when when we do the mail out ballots, everybody gets one. If you do it in a different district where people have to come to the precinct.
And you make your, you combine your polling places to the district office.
Well, you know, but you but but only people that really care about the issue a lot of times.
They're all gonna go, they're all gonna get a ballot.
Right, but I, to me, the mail, the mail ballot is almost a liability.
Agreed, but we can't change the three precincts.
I I I get that.
Yeah.
But but in those districts where people go where it's not an election. Generally.
You're correct, yeah.
Yeah, so so I.
It's a bigger lever.
Yeah, it is.
My precinct voted for district for question two and three. I did my job.
So the timeline is the next six months to have it finalized and.
What would be the next? What would be like the first like? I mean, we're talking here, but. I mean, we're talking here, but like, we're obviously not taking action.
Well, I'm hearing it's worth asking questions. I'm hearing it's not dead, um, but maybe it's scaled back and maybe there's other, so I don't know. I, I, I think, I gotta think back to our last one. We agreed to engage ICS, you know, a year and a half ahead of time, and while we don't necessarily need to do that now, cuz ICS is already engaged, so it might be as soon as it might be as soon as start throwing together some work sessions to talk about how to reframe things and scale things back. While I'm vetting things with I triple R B and Grant Housechild and the Vikings and anybody else who can throw money at us.
Vikings, they're having a good year.
They are, and we, we almost have their logo. I mean, come on.
There's a former Viking player that.
Oh, what's his name? Uh, C J Ham from Duluth.
Yes.
He's a dead film kid. But he's got a connection to the shore.
Anyway, there, there's a guy, I'm, I have to ask my dad, that comes up every year for a dog.
We're digging deep now.
At least build a connection, right? Sometimes that, you have the stronger social capital than you realize sometimes.
Well, and to Jeff's credit, he likes to get creative, right? And so are there ways that maybe you're asking the public for four million or five million rather than nine?
Well, maybe, uh, you can find if there's any traction, any real traction with some of this stuff, you know, that could be. I mean, you, some of this stuff, either you'll probably quickly realize if there's. You know?
For sure.
And I'm happy to accept that I am sometimes wrong, but I got a really good vibe, I know, sucks, sometimes I'm wrong, but I had a really good vibe from the vote, like, the, the vocal people that there wasn't like some major vote no or some really negative push. And what I suspect is more likely, people got there and they were like, I wasn't really thinking about this that much, but I don't want my taxes to go up, no, you know?
And it was already a big ask.
And it was a big ask.
And it was a big ballot. There was a lot of stuff.
I don't know, I thought it was pretty easy to fill out.
Okay.
You have trouble either. But there are plenty of people that I watched them vote and vote, and they were not taking time to fill out the whole ballot.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you.
So what's the next step on this? We gotta.
We're gonna tie one more, I think.
Talking about more, Crystal.
Oh, I would love to vote on it tonight.
The slot didn't be done.
You might be out.
Eric doesn't wanna waste his breath on it anymore.
Exactly.
No, we're not.
Who's graciously, huh?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna even talk about it anymore tonight, so. Okay, we're gonna move on to nine point O, which is our personnel. Nine point one is our new hires. Designations leave of absence slate. Sure.
I got them.
You know, those. Um, okay, in the pack, we've got it here in the packet.
Two coaches hired, one resigned, and a pair of professional hired. Rehired, actually.
Yeah, I was gonna say John. Great to see John back. At the year, worked with my daughter a ton in the past, and I had really good experiences. Fair professional, yeah, so he was in my daughter's.
Motion.
Of course she was a G S.
I don't know, these things work, sure.
Second by Eric.
I do have a question, but I don't know if I'm allowed to ask.
You can, we'll second it first, and then we'll have a discussion.
But then it's approved.
No, it is. No, we have to vote to approve it.
Oh, okay, I'm not gonna second it.
You're not gonna second the new hire resignation?
Go ahead.
Okay, discussion. Now is it, now we discuss.
Okay, well, I don't know what I'm allowed to ask.
So in Robert's rules, actually, we're not even supposed to discuss things until we have a motion and a second. That was the time.
Was this resignation voluntary?
It was submitted by the coach.
Okay, so they're okay with resigning? I mean, cuz there was controversy and now this person resigned, so that's what I'm gonna ask.
Fair question.
Yeah, but not at a public board table. We can have a conversation.
Okay.
This is interesting, and I, um, maybe not quantifying like our, our right or wrong, but we used to, whenever someone resigned, have access to see their letter of resignation, and it felt very transparent. And that's, this has been a long time, right? This has been probably since about the time that Chris.
Let's not say something where we.
That we used to, we used to be able to see these things, and so when I saw it, I felt better about I've done my due diligence and, you know, I saw it and there's no, you know, for all, for all of them, you never know what someone's story is, and it's nice to see their story. And we now, we no longer see them, and we were given good reasons why.
Because then you could say, then you could vote yea or nay more.
Well, the, so there's good reasons why those don't appear in the packet. I know that, like, some boards have like a policy or a practice or something where, I mean, the superintendent has seen it, and like, maybe the board chair sees it or something, like a member of the board, like, sees all of those letters. Well, some board, that's just an example. No, that's not our practice, that hasn't been our practice. I've just heard about that being a practice from M S B A as as this question I've heard you asked, just in terms of.
And I've understood the valid reasons and the not sort of micromanaging and privacy, not having something dramat, like, something directly in the board packet. On the other hand, at its core, voting about things that we know little about. And it's not, I, I mean, this is just a, a general, it's not about new hires and resignations so much. But I hate as a board member.
Voting blind.
Feeling like I'm expected to vote by blindly about anything. That makes me extremely uncomfortable.
I would strongly recommend that the board ask these questions directly with our teamwork's consultant when we have a retreat in February or end of January. Uh, because this gets right at the core of governance and the dangers of sliding out of governance with a lack of education and knowledge about what's hypocritical and private and what's data privacy and what erodes public trust and even to ask at a board table, well, was there controversy around that? That by itself starts to beg questions in the minds of people watching and, um, per medical leave of absence, well, shouldn't even say it's medical, right? Like, that's actually not appropriate to say. We, we just approve a leave of absence in a public board document. So there's a lot of a good reason, and to be as a board member, sometimes protected from, and being able to say, you know what, I'm not in those weeds, because that's not my job, and I don't wanna be in those weeds. Um, to, to keep you out of that. So I, when our consultant is here at the end of January, let's, let's ask that question.
Don't you think it's a double-edged sword, though? Because if there was a controversy and we're all liable. You know what I mean?
Right, and so let's, let's ask that question, and what's the sys, our question should be, what's the system? Like, what's the check and balance and process to make sure the superintendent is holding people accountable to doing their job, right? Like, that's, that's the governance level question. Chris, how do we know that, uh, due diligence was done in, in in resulting in this resignation, right? Um, then, and that's a great conversation to have offline, and I can walk you through exactly what went on in that scenario and, uh, how it played out.
Well, and then there's like, there's just things that, and then there's the the sort of formality of board approval, which is just part of our draw, job of a, a lot of things, you know, things that we do, that we designate all the work to. It's not that we don't have access to this information, you know?
I do like, so sometimes there has been situations, so in my, now I'm starting my third term next month. And I've been two terms almost with Dan, and one time in these you know, eight years that I've been on the board, I remember we had a legal issue. And it was something that was icky, and we were kind of in, like, I kinda wanted to know, but not, you know, like, you'd like, I don't wanna, if, if there's I love saying great things about our students and celebrating our school, and once, when that icky thing happens. And this is not something, like I said, we're talking once in eight years, right? We're talking once in eight years, this is not something that I wanna publicly say is prevalent at Cook County schools or anything. But I remember talking to Dan about it, and I was like, ah, I kinda feel like it's my due diligence to read this legal information. But I'm really uncomfortable with it. And having a conversation with Dan and him saying, you know what, I felt the same way, and I looked at it, and, you know, ultimately I feel confident that I double-checked that everything we did seemed in good order, and we had done our due diligence, and having that conversation with him, I remember at the time, I'm feeling really you know, it was one of those gun-wrenching moments, you're like, oh, it's a big horrible task to be in charge of. Um, and it felt really good, and Dan and I sometimes disagree on things throughout the years and whatnot, but I really trust his integrity. And I trusted that conversation, and I never read it after that, I just trusted him. So maybe something like Dan is saying, where there's like, uh, there's a point person, like, as we look at our processes and talk about it more thoroughly, and maybe February, I had a workshop. Maybe there's a point person where it's like, well, they don't all get put in the packet, they're not public, but just to feel like we're doing our due diligence and there's someone who, you know, like, we have a treasurer and all the financial work gets done. And I've been scouring through things and like, every question I've asked Teresa, she's like, oh, it just got put here. You know, it's nothing, but I, we're still do our due diligence, and that's important. The finances are a huge important part, and so our sort of liability and involvement when there's, when things don't go super smooth at different times throughout the years, maybe it'd be nice to, to consider a route like that, like, maybe we don't all get it, but.
And if it is legal, uh, then, and this personnel, then the board needs to go into a closed session where you get private information.
But that's a disciplinary action, right?
Or an investigation, or, you know, something, you know, wonky that we need to just clear the air on. I mean, you can do that as a board. Um, if something doesn't smell right.
So if it were just our practice that like, oh, so-and-so is the person, every letter of rec, rec, resignation goes to Eric, and every, you know, like, this is your this is your extra set of eyes, and if you have concerns, but I'm not, I mean, it doesn't, yeah, I'm just saying, just in general. We had a practice where it felt like, well, we're being asked to to go over something that we maybe all shouldn't have eyes on, but we didn't, if we didn't see it, we don't feel great about having done our job, maybe we'd feel better knowing, well, at least one of us did that portion. It's just a thought, it's completely in the weeds on what the topic is right now.
It's a good conversation for our workshop.
For sure, and it come, this topic kinda had, takes on different forms, different types of topics, but, and I, and I think it's really important for us to remind ourselves too, that it's not a dereliction of our duty if we're not in the weeds on every issue. Like, part of our job is to, like, employ the right people that are professionals to handle these things, and that's and that's okay, you know, that's, that's not a dereliction of our duty, that's us doing a good job by letting other people do the jobs that we're asking them to do, you know what I mean? And sometimes it's like finding that line, and, and we should totally have this.
Ever have those conversations where you're listening to someone and they're like, well, does the board know this? And you think, well, no, I don't, and in this case, is it, you ki- kinda quantify in your head, and you maybe don't throw us under the bus and be like, we've got no clue, but you're like, let me think about this, how do I feel, and do I feel like we know sufficiently? Is this something we should know about, right? And I feel like that would be, I'm not saying that I should be the person who should look through every, you know, like, ooh, I wanna know, but it would make me feel like, well, no, we have a person who looks at all of these things and double-checks, and everything's really transparent, and we have access to it. Which I know that we have access if we request any of this, like, you have access to say, I would like to look at that. And you're supposed to be able to see it, there's, nobody should tell you no, right? But then you feel weird, like, if I really ask about all of them, if I'm asking about this one, am I implying something? Yeah, there's so much.
It depends, we don't have access to every little thing, because it's, it's not really our, our lane always to see everything.
Or our legal rights.
Right, so, but we should, this is a good discussion, let's maybe put a pin in it for now and stick it, you know, pick it up in a few minutes. It's good for all of us to be on the same page, because then we all know how it all works, and we can respond to those inquiries, this is how we handle this, you know, and then we feel good.
We're also gonna have a new board member, and, sorry, we're also gonna have a new board member, so February is a good time to just.
It's actually the end of January thirtieth.
Is the workshop or the?
The one.
Retreat.
The retreat, which we still would have, I mean, the new board member.
That's why we did it.
Solidly on board at that point, and then then we can discuss the process.
So I will say, this pro, this issue, and I don't have strong feel, I don't know anything about it, but there is a blurb, I think, in the board notes, maybe. Maybe, or, I, I heard something. And now there's a resignation, so I'm just gonna say I'm not a hundred percent comfortable voting on this, and I'm not going to. Am I allowed to do that?
You can abstain.
I'm gonna abstain, yep.
And I would invite you to call me anytime before a board meeting, when you see that.
I'm not saying I'm mad about this, yeah.
But I can, I can share a lot more with you.
Okay, that's cool.
Than I can in a public board meeting.
And maybe that was bad, we're not doing my homework.
Well, that's what we're supposed to do, is do our homework, but sometimes it feels, I do think there's almost like a political, like, if I'm doing my homework, does it feel like I'm doing my homework, or does it feel like I'm pushing in somewhere I should, like, what's appropriate? I've been doing this for a long time, I'm in theory the most seasoned board member, and I just. So.
Yeah, we're, with, thank you. And thank you for your last meeting. Let's vote on this, and then we'll pick this conversation back up. So we've got a, a motion and a second, so all those in favor? Aye, those opposed? Motion carries.
One abstention?
One abstain.
One abstention, and we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that one.
Okay.
This guy, you're unfresh.
We're adjourned at seven twenty-six.
He's out.
Oh, your final, that's your final, sign off.
Yeah, that's like final report.